So, first question. What made you decide to run again?
What made me decide to run again? Great question. Karen, probably what I would tell you, the first thing is, is once you get in and you kind of learn what all there is going on, and you realize what you get involved in, there are things you want to see to the end, or there's things that you want to see progress. And that's one of the things that's driving me forward. The other thing that I learned out of that was the fact is, the city doesn't move as fast as my personal business, or my family, or you don't make decisions on those kind of a, on a timeline. Your timelines are longer. And so, to get things that you've seen start, to see them progress, or even some of them maybe even finish, it takes more than two years.
Okay. What do you bring to the job that would make you a better choice than your opponent?
You know what? I've ran my dental practice for 32 years, and it is, to some degree, it's a microcosm of what I've seen at the city. And you know, and I said that two years ago. And what I didn't realize is, that's absolutely true. People've got lots of problems. They need the problem solved. They're expecting me to critically think my way through them, to weigh all the advantages and the disadvantages, and to be completely unbiased in my decisions. And I believe that that's what I've done, and that's why I'm running again. And that's what I bring to the table.
The council's been criticized for some, for some things that have happened during council meetings. There was a ban on clapping for a short time. What did you learn from that decision? It's changed now. You know, how do you, how do you look back at that situation?
You know what? Every experience needs to be a learning experience. And so, you do what you think is in the best interest of everybody involved, and you know what? Sometimes you don't make the right decision. But you're given the opportunity to go back and correct those decisions, and to move forward. And so, yeah, maybe there were some decisions that now then you look back, you go, you know, maybe we could have handled that a little bit differently. And so, going forward, we handle it differently.
There is an open meetings lawsuit against the city and the council regarding some perceived, claims of open meetings violations, like a quorum of city council attending an Amarillo Economic Development meeting, or that the council took a vote after saying it was not taking public comment about something. I know it's hard to talk about current litigation, but what do you take from, from those claims about transparency and how you need to operate?
You know what? We have to be completely transparent. We have to be absolutely, completely transparent. One of those, like the one at the AEDC meeting, you know what? That was like, either the first or the second week after the elections. We had not had Open Meetings Act orientation at all. The meeting is posted, not posted like the city posted, but the meeting's posted, it's an AEDC meeting, I'm gonna go show up. I didn't know that we had walked into something that we weren't supposed to do. The second that we were told, that I was told, as far as I knew, I just needed to be in a completely different part of the room, and I couldn't talk to anybody. So, I was completely in a different part of the room from anybody else. Sat back in the back, just listened, got up and left. So, you know, we have to be completely transparent, and I'm going to be completely transparent. I don't have anything to hide. You know, practicing as a dentist, I take, I take an oath to be honest, forthright, to do the best for my patients. Why would I do anything different?
Okay. What are the next initiatives you want to pursue beyond what's ongoing?
The next initiatives? Well, you know what? We passed it, we passed the beginning of it today, the planning and zoning. We need a revamp. That was originally, those planning and zoning laws were passed in August the 19th, 1968. I was starting school in the second grade that week.
So, it's time for an update?
So, it's time for an update. There are other things. You know, we've got a, we've got the Parks and Recreations, they're doing an assessment. You know what? We also have, which is real important to me, and it's real important to everybody else, are the streets. We had a comprehensive look at all of the streets, and that has yet to been formulated in a plan for us to look at. That's probably gonna be one of the biggest initiatives I want to see happen, because we have a thou, over a thousand miles of city streets in town. And we've gotta figure out a way of how, going forward in the future, we're gonna be able to address all of those needs in a timely fashion. Those are the kind of things, so I've got this, I want us to be looking 10 and 20 years down the road, and I don't want us to get caught, and have some of the problems that we've been caught with. So, the only way we can do that is to systematically look through everything, and set everything up, so we're looking at it on a, on an ongoing frequent basis.
You've caused me to get to my last question and move it around. How do you pay for new growth, since you're talking about streets? How do you pay for new growth while still maintaining existing infrastructure? And should developers pay more of the cost of that growth?
I don't, I don't know if developers should be paying more of the cost of that. I can't answer that part. The one part of it, because I need more information on that. I need to be able to compare it to other cities of similar size, and see how that's going. The other part is, okay, so, the way we pay for that is, we have to increase our sales tax. The way that we increase our sales tax is, we bring industries in here that help us generate. Like, a perfect one that's gonna be a big impact is, we need the vet school. We've got to have that vet school here, and I'm committed to do whatever it takes for us to get that vet school here. We need to have a good plan with the AEDC on how they're gonna bring jobs in. That's gonna help. The other thing is, is we've been working with the school system, and with Amarillo College, and actually with Amarillo Area Foundation, so it's no longer the ACE, it's now the Thrive Program. Any of the Amarillo High Schools, AISD schools, if you have an 80 or above average, you've got the possibility of going to AC for 60 hours free. That's huge. Go any other place in the U.S., and you're not gonna find anything close to that. That's how we get our kids to the point where they are going to, people are gonna be looking and going, they've got a job market for us, and it's wide open, and they can train kids to do whatever we need for them to do. Those are the way that we end up doing that. We have to be careful about property taxes, we gotta keep them low. I think we've done a pretty great job on that. You know, we have not changed the M&amp;O, the maintenance and operational part of it. It's stayed flat the past two years. We've done a really good job. The only change that's occurred has been in the interest in sinking, which is basically the bond proposals that we voted on in 2017, I believe, November 2017, I think. So, that's what's happening with that part. And I'll tell you, you know, I think we're doing a pretty good job. We're doing a good enough job that we were able to take from reserves and pay down the interest in sinking part, $650,000. So, the rate is not as high as what we had agreed upon that it could be, because we had enough reserves without affecting our bond rating or anything, that we could pay down $650,000 on that. So, that kept our, our interest in sinking fund down just a little bit, so.
Okay. And as far as the veterinary school, what would it bring to the city, and what is the, is the cost or the incentive cost worth, worth it?
Holy cow. Is the cost worth it? It's absolutely worth it. Okay, so, let's just look at the hardcore part of it. We're gonna bring a university, a graduate school, basically. They're gonna have 400 students on campus. Those 400 students have got, I can't remember, 90 faculty that I believe will be coming. Part of most university faculty mean that they're gonna be doing, not only are they teaching, but they're doing research. And that research means, we're gonna have firms coming from all over the country that are gonna want a part of what their research projects are. Whenever you start doing those kind of things, now then you start bringing more people in, and more people, and so it just, it increases the value of our city, all the way around. I mean, it's gonna increase the value of the level of students that we can produce. And then you put that vet school alongside the med school, alongside the pharmacy school, it'll be the only place in the U.S. where you have all three on one campus. And they've been talking extensively about what that has to do with food safety. We could become the place in the country, if not the world, where people come to figure out issues with food safety. And food safety's a huge, is becoming more and more a huge problem all over the world.
Seems like there's a recall every day.
Yeah, there is.
Opponents, challengers in this election have mentioned single-member districts. Several are for it, some have said not, or that they'd have to look at it. What's your position on single-member districts?
You know what? I like the at-large, because, but let me get all the way through to the end. I like at-large, because that means that I'm representing the entire city. My problem with single-member districts are, there is this propensity towards you have, that's my district, and I'll, if you give me this, I'll give you that. That's the only thing I would say about that. Here's gonna be the big deal. The biggest deal on this is really not gonna be, do we want single-member districts? The big deal on this is gonna be, is our city council actually big enough to handle? Do, do we need more than five members on city council? I think the easy answer to that part of it is, probably yes, we do. So, the second that we choose to change the charter to add members, we automatically invoke the fact that we will have to have single-member districts. Maybe we'll end up, if that's the case that we follow, I see, I envision something kind of like Lubbock City Council. They've got a hybrid. They've got four-member districts, they've got three at-large, and the mayor's at-large. Yeah, that's seven. And so, I could see something like that end up happening. You know, I don't think there's a city even close to our size, especially larger, that only has five. So, I think that probably, at some point in time, we're gonna have to talk about, do we need more representation on city council? And that's really, for me, that's the driving question. So, the single-member district for me is really pretty much a moot point. I'm willing to do, I'm willing to go there, and I'm definitely willing to go there, if that means that we're gonna, that the reason is, we're adding to the size of council.
Okay. Some have claimed that the mayor and council are paying attention to some areas to the detriment of others. North Heights and East Amarillo have been mentioned. How do you answer that claim?
Well, you know what? Here's the way I kind of look at that. So, a wheel has a hub, and you gotta make sure the hub's working well, because it affects how all the rest of it. So, there's been a lot of work on the hub. I think that we have to look at all parts of town. You know, we've got the North Heights Neighborhood Plan, it's finalized, it's finished, it's well underway. And we're starting to move in that, in that direction. The Warford Center is a, is a good example. That started before my time on the council, but we got to finish that project. There's not a project in town like that. There's nothing even close to that in town. It's right exactly where it needs to be.
And you're talking about a community center in the Heights?
Yeah, in the North Heights, yeah, the Warford Community Center. And here's another plug. If you haven't been there, you need to go there and take a look at it. It is a gorgeous place. There's nothing been short on that project at all. The Barrios Project, it's finalized, it's starting to move along. And let me tell you something. Talk about some people that are really coming together, that wanna see some great things happen. That's happening over there. Teresa Kennedy, the secretary for that deal, man, she is a driving force. She's doing a great job. There's several others. Manny De La Santos, the pastor at Power Church. I mean, those guys are really bringing that part of the community, and giving us the opportunity. I've had the opportunity to experience part of their community. It's, it's a phenomenal thing. And then actually, tonight is the kickoff meeting for the San Jacinto Neighborhood Project. So, that's gonna start. So, there's all of these things that are happening, that the intention is, is this isn't just, this is a, this is a very diverse city. It's a very diverse city. You have the far east side of town, and the East Ridge has got, what, 20 or 30 different dialects and languages over there, all the way to, there's just so much flavor. And all you gotta do is spend a little time, I, I have a hard time with people saying that it's just centered around downtown. Yes, the catalyst projects did happen. And yes, they're gonna be finished on time, in budget, and it's gonna be a good thing. And it's just gonna help drive everything else as we move forward.
Since we're talking, tell me on the, on the two plans that are in place, the North Heights and the Barrio, what, give me some examples of real progress on those plans.
Some, well, what I would tell you, the first thing on the progress on those plans are, it's giving each one of those communities within the city a focal point with which to come together and to be able to move forward. So, the North Heights, they just did their, the arts project, and that was an outstanding result. I wasn't able to be here whenever they did, they're really still at Sunset Center, but when they actually did it at their community center in North Heights, the, the attendance was outstanding. And I saw people from all over town. And everybody was absolutely coming together to see those kind of things happen. And those are the kind of things that we have to kind of keep pushing forward. We can't, so, really what I think it is, is we, we can't just quit, and we can't just let it sit on the back burner. We, otherwise it'll get neglected. We just have to keep pushing forward. And they're doing that. And we're gonna help them, and we're gonna provide everything we can.
You mentioned the, the multipurpose event venue. How do you make sure that, that it, from the city's perspective, it does what the city wanted it to do, as far as helping increase sales tax, and do some of those things? And then some challengers have raised questions about only getting a rent fee, that some of it goes back into maintenance, and not having concessions and other things go to the city.
Okay, so, let's put it even in terms of, like my practice. So, somebody builds a building, and I rent that building from them. Therefore, I have control over that building the entire time that I'm renting the building from them. And I'm paying a rental fee for that building. That's exactly what has happened here. Okay? The deal, the difference between those two are, is between my building and the MPev is this, is what I'm paying for the building does help reduce the debt service on it. The difference with this is, what we're collecting helps pay for the maintenance and operation of the, of the ball, of the MPev ballpark. The way that the ballpark is being paid for, is it's being paid for because it's secured with the highest bond rating bonds, and hot taxes are taking care of that. And if it's the highest, if it's the highest bond rate, then that means that we're very secure with the level of, of hot tax that we have committed towards that. So, I say that it's, it's not looking at it completely clearly like you really should look at it. You're, you're trying to mix apples and oranges, and they're two completely different things. To say that they would pay a rent that would pay for the building, that's not how it was set up to begin with. Their rent is, is in an effort to help us keep that building maintained at a proper level.
And hot tax, you were referring to the hotel occupancy tax?
Yeah, the hotel occupancy tax, yes ma'am.
What are your thoughts on the closing of Thompson Park Pool, and how did it get so bad?
That's a devastating thing, honestly, to, for that pool to be lost. And that pool's pretty much lost. You know what? A really great thing happened. We hired Michael Koshuba as the Parks and Recreations Director. And so, the first thing he does is, he comes in, and he's only been on the job since, I think, February or March. So, he comes in, and the first thing that he wants to do is, he wants to do an assessment of all of our assets. So, he's art, and one of the things that led to it was, he starts looking at some of the assets, and he walks into the Thompson Park Pool, and they look at it, and they go, we're done. It has to be shut down. It's dangerous. So, now then, what ends up having to happen is, we have to replace it. And I believe we do have to replace it. How we replace it, that's a completely different question that has to be answered. We have to assess what all is going on with all the parks and recreation, all the assets. And then we have to come up with a plan for the future on exactly how we wanna replace that. The last thing that we wanna do, if you look at other cities around the country, the last thing we wanna do is dig a hole in the ground, and just put a pool in there. Because that doesn't suffice for what communities want anymore. We need to know exactly, does it have water features? Does it have the lazy river? Does it have all of these other things that actually go into it? So, we could go, and we could potentially do that, but that wouldn't be the right thing to do. And how did it get so bad? You know, that's before my time. I wish I could, I wish I had an answer for that kind of deal. That's part of the reason that I wanna run again, is because I wanna make for sure we have some systems in place, so that we're looking at these things on a frequent basis. And, and to be quite honest with you, that's another one of the reasons I ran to begin with, is because we wanted to change the tone down at City Hall. And the tone, it's a completely different thing. Now then, people are not so afraid to come and say, okay, this is going wrong, this is going wrong, this is going wrong. How are we gonna fix it? And just lay it at our feet, and then we have to come up with a plan on how that's gonna be taken care of. And that's one of the things that has to happen. We've gotta look at these things long-term.
Okay. The Texas Legislature is considering enacting a property tax cap on local governments. It would require voter approval for tax rate increases of 2.5% or more. What's your position on that, and how would that impact city needs?
Well, the first, the first thing that I would tell you is this. We need property tax reform, all the way around. To say that I would ever be against property tax reform is crazy. We live in a very conservative city. It's one of the most, we, we have the best combination of rate and everything. There's nobody that touches us and does with their tax money what we actually do with our tax money, and make it go far. So, I am all for property tax reform. And you know, whatever is decided on by our legislature, I'm 100% behind, and we'll make it work. We will make it work. Does it put a strain on cities? Yeah, it really does. And the biggest thing that I, that, that would make me worry is, 49% of our general fund, funds public safety. So, what's gonna be one of the first things that's gonna have some issues if we run into a cap that's a problem? So, that would be the only reason that that worries me, makes me a little worrisome. But you know what? I have full faith in our, in our public here, in, in the citizens here. That's one of the number-one things that they're worried about, is gonna be that we have public safety, that we have, that our roads are good. So, if, if that happens, then, and we run into a shortfall, and we have to do that, I would have no problem taking that back and saying, okay, citizens of Amarillo, we need your help, we need you to say okay for this.
Okay. What public safety improvements have you made, and what more will you try to do?
Okay. First one, this is, this is such an easy one. We've hired, we've added 23 officers, police officers. We've added five firefighters. Over the next two cycles, we're gonna add 10 more firefighters, because two of the firehouses are gonna turn into two company firehouses. So, we're doing a lot to, to enhance that. We enhanced, redid the 911 system. That's a huge deal. And you know what? And looking down the road, we still, what we've gotta do is, we've gotta make for sure that we've, number one, have got enough officers that are trained well, that we can fight crime. You know what? It's, it's an awful thing that we've got a, a high domestic violence rate, we've got some of those other things. And the first way we start is by putting the people in position who can protect us. Then the second way is, listening to Chief Drain. Chief Drain's got a thousand ideas on how we're going to address. One of them being, is he's managed to talk to the district attorneys, and now then, what were not considered necessarily felony offenses that should have been charged as felony offenses, are now being charged as felony offenses. Some of those offenses also then let us take them from a state felony to a federal felony. So, whenever you go from a state felony to a federal felony, and you send those individuals that are committing those crimes away, in the state, they come back in less than 50% of their time being served, and they go on probation. When you're on the federal side, you're gonna serve, I think it's, the average is 94% of your, so, there are all of these different things that are gonna, that will help us in an effort to, to, to change that. And was there something more to that one? Or is that it?
Just, you, it was what more will you try to do, so you gave us a glimpse of that. Where do you stand on, we've talked about the Texas Tech Veterinary School, but a little bit more on where you stand on tax abatements and incentive projects for, for businesses?
Well, here's, here's where this really comes. In a perfect world, we wouldn't have to use that. The reality is, guess what? We're fighting with Dallas, and Houston, and San Antonio, and all of these major markets that are much, much bigger than us. And frankly, we've got more to offer than they do. We've got a lot more. We've got a better way of life, we've got a better quality of life, our weather's better, all of these other things. But also with that, we can't just sell that and get them to come here. So, we have to be willing to make legal, state-legislated openings that say, we will give you this if you will come here. They're not forever abatements, but you know what? We have to play the same games everybody else. We can't just organically grow this. We have to be serious about how we're gonna do this, and we have to let them know how serious that we are about it.
Why was the utility billing software rollout such a mess, and how are the problems being corrected?
Because it's a completely new computer system. And that's the most simplistic answer I can give you. And it's probably the best answer I can give you. Anytime that you change a computer system, there's always kinks, and there's always things that you've gotta work out. I can tell you right now, I saw a post on Facebook, and actually, this particular person was throwing some knives, but was being kind about throwing the knives. I took a copy of it, I sent it to the city manager, and he goes, you're, she's absolutely right. This, and this, and these things are going, and here's what we're doing. And he gave me a whole litany of lists. They're, they're not just sitting back going, oh, tough luck. They're working, they're working really hard. And the problem with, and the, one of our other things is customer service. And it's sometimes it's hard when you're fielding hundreds of calls a day, and there're gonna be some that are gonna be slipped up, and that still doesn't mean that it's okay. But I can guarantee you that they're working really hard to fix all the glitches and get all of that worked out. And it's gonna be like anything, whenever we get through the glitches and we get them worked out, it's gonna be a smooth system, and we're gonna like what we've got.
Okay. Many residents believe the, the city should concentrate on the civic center improvements rather than the MPev and convention hotels. So, how do you get the civic center updated, and how do you pay for that?
That's a really complex question. It's a good question, but it's pretty complex. So, the way that you start, is you start with a select group of people, and then you let them grow the group until that group is large enough that you encompass everybody in town. And so, there's been five people that have been selected for a committee to start looking at, what do we, what do we, being the city, not we being the city council, it's we being the city. There's not, we're not involved in this part of it at all. And so, they're basically commissioned with going out and getting a number of people, probably about 30 people apiece, and they're working through. So, this committee will end up being about 150 people, of all walks of life, all over the community. And the whole idea is, all of the questions you're asking, what do we want it to look like? What are we willing to do? How are we gonna, how much is this gonna cost? And how are we gonna pay for it? And that part of it is, is I'm, I'm here to help wade through all of that whenever it comes back, and help make the decision, but I'm not about to make a decision until I know how a majority of Amarillo actually stands on the deal.
When should city meetings take place, and how can you get the, the city to get more people to cooperate? There's been some criticism about the moving around of meetings.
Yeah, there is. And so, here's, so we, you know, this is one thing that I actually remember as time goes on, is there's always people that are upset with whatever time the meeting place, what, what time the meeting is. I mean, if you look back at past city councils, the times moved all over the place. They've actually moved the meeting all over the place. And the end result of all of that was, not a whole lot changed. So- So, we felt like that the best thing that we could do would be, what would be the best time? Five o'clock's not a great time. I mean, you've got lots of people that have got kids or family, they're getting off work, they're going home. Number one, five o'clock, that means that people still have to take off work to make for sure that they get there. And if they haven't signed up, they have to be to the city office by 4:30 to make for sure that they sign up for that. So, what we kinda felt like would be the best thing to do is, what would be the most opportune time that would maybe give everybody an opportunity without, well, the best opportunity? And that would really be the lunchtime. So, we have, so, not only did we move it to lunch, to noon, to try and facilitate, so, a lot of other people could come, but we actually doubled the time that was available. So, it was supposed to be from twelve to one. So, if it's twelve to one and you get three minutes, that means, now that we've gone from ten people given the opportunity to speak at a, at a public comment, to twenty people to speak. And so, that's what the intention was, was to do that, then we would start the business part of the meeting at 1:00 PM. And so, that's the reason that we made that move, was really to try and accommodate the biggest number of people that we possibly could.
Okay. How do you pay for new growth while still maintaining existing infrastructure, and should developers pay more of that cost?
I don't know if developers should pay more of that cost. How do we do that? It still goes back to, so, it goes back to a lot of different things. So, it goes back to, we have to increase sales tax, so we can generate more for our general fund. The By the Way campaign has been stellar, fantastic. We're up, what is it, 2.9% year over year?
And that's the campaigner encouraging local shopping?
Encouraging local shopping. And the interesting thing about that was, it wasn't saying, we want all of it, we just want a hundred dollars. And this is what a hundred dollars will do. This is what a thousand dollars of your online spending or your out-of-town spending would do. And this is what we have seen. So, it's gotta be a concerted effort to do that. The other thing that we've gotta do, and that's where part of the planning and zoning thing comes in, and the rewrite of the planning and zoning, the next thing that also has to happen is, how do we encourage people to build inside what we currently have? Sprawl is gonna be, it's a difficult thing to manage, because we're just getting bigger and bigger, we've already got a thousand miles of city streets to take care of, and we're gonna add more. Well, we've got all of these areas that have got all the infrastructure in place, they've got all the streets in place, everything's in place, we just need to figure out, how do we have the incentives, and how do we find the right developers that they want to take care, take advantage of what we've already got for them here? And so, those are the things that we kinda have to work on and change. So, I don't, and I'm not convinced necessarily, and, and maybe it is, maybe part of it is the developers' fees, but if we could, if we could be more impactful with what we currently have in infill, then that may be a moot point, honestly.